Well, thanks so much. Let's go for this. Let's start with a word of prayer, shall we? "Holy God, we gather again, and we look again to your word. We ask that you would guide us, that you would speak your word to us, that you would help us to encounter you in the midst of your word; for in your name we pray." Amen. Well, tonight's the night. It's the last night of our study, and tonight God is going to speak. For thirty-five chapters, Job has been crying out for an answer from God. Tonight, he's gonna get it, and it's not quite what he's been expecting. Tonight, we're gonna start with chapter thirty-eight and look at the Lord's answer to Job. Before we do that, let me take just a little bit of time and summarize where we've been again. Just a quick run-through of the book up to this point. Remember, Job was introduced way back in chapter one as a good, upright man. He's a righteous man. He's an obedient man. He's not perfect. He's a good man. He serves God. That's very important to him. And Satan decides that Job should be tested. Satan goes to God and says, "Job's really not that faithful. You have simply bought his obedience. You know, you are so good to Job. You give Job everything. He's not that pious. You take those gifts away from Job, he will curse you to your face." And God accepts the challenge. God accepts the challenge, and so Job first loses, what? His wealth and his family. And then, a second four-round, he loses his own health. He is afflicted. His life becomes miserable. And Job does not curse God. Job does not curse God. He gets awfully close to it a few places, but he doesn't curse God. He is devastated. He's out in the city dump. He has sores. He's in horrible health. Three of his friends come to visit him and comfort him. And so, the friends come, and Job cries out to them, and they're in his pain. And the friends respond by telling Job that his suffering has to be the result of his sin. Again, we've talked about that. It's a basic doctrine, the retribution doctrine, the retribution dogma, that we get where we deserve, that if we're good, we get good. If we're bad, we get bad. Well, Job is obviously suffering. There means something must have gone wrong. There's gotta be some sin that accounts for all that. And so, the friends say, "Job, whatever it was, repent and return to God." And Job says, "No, I have nothing to repent of. This is not a result of my sin." Most of the book is this argument between Job and his friends. It does need to be noted, Job has proved Satan wrong. Satan has said that Job only loves God because of what God gives him. And Job has proven Satan to be a liar. What is apparent in the book, again and again and again, is that what agonizes Job the most is his problems with God. And it becomes very clear that Job really does love God. There is an authentic relationship between God and human beings. So, Job has proven Satan wrong, but he has not come through his troubles unscathed. He has sinned. You know, in the midst of all this, he has sinned. He becomes self-righteous. He calls God unjust. He has not trusted God. He has proven Satan wrong, but he's also sinned in the process. Last time we met, two weeks ago, we ended by noting there really is a rising crescendo in the book of Job. Job starts out with suffering. He cries out. He argues with his friends. He wins the argument. He defeats his friends in the argument, but he really becomes self-righteous in the process. He demands that God listen to him. Job kind of arrogantly demands that God now answer him. Well, tonight, God's gonna answer. Tonight, God is gonna answer, and Job is gonna be in for a surprise. So, when in doubt, always hear what the good Lord has to say. Chapter thirty-eight is where we pick up the reading. And chapter thirty-eight and thirty-nine are God's answer to Job. Thirty-eight and thirty-nine, God answers Job. Let me read, oh, the first fifteen verses out of chapter thirty-eight. It begins by saying, "Then the Lord answered Job out of the world: 'Who is this that darkens counsel by words without knowledge? Gird up your loins like a man; I shall question you, and you shall declare to me.'" Okay, Job, you got questions for me? Well, I got a few for you. "Gird up your loins. Stand up like a man, and I got some questions." God then continues, "Where were you when I laid the foundation of the earth? Tell me if you have understanding. Who determined its measurement? Surely you know. Or who stretched the line upon it? On what were its bases sunk? Or who laid the cornerstone when the morning stars sang together and all the heavenly beings shouted for joy? Or who shut the sea with doors when it burst out from the womb? When I made the clouds its garment and thick darkness its swaddling band, and prescribed bounds for it, and set bars and doors, and said, 'Thus far you shall have no further, and here your proud waves should be stopped? Have you commanded the morning since your days began and caused the dawn to know its place, so that it might take hold of the skirts of the earth and the wicked be shaken out of it? It has changed like clay under the seal, and it has died like a garment. Light is withheld from the wicked, and their uplifted arm is broken. Have you entered into the springs of the sea or walked in the recesses of the deep?" And God goes on and on and on and says, "Okay, Job, tell me, how did you create light? Where did you store the snow? How do you make a rain? Tell me about these stars up in the heaven later on. Tell me how you hung all of those." God speaks, "out of the world," it says. But it is kind of a strange speech. And it's really not what I would have expected. And at least, at first glance, it doesn't seem to be a direct answer to Job's questions. What God speaks of are the marvels and the complexities of creation. He just speaks of the wonders of this universe. Chapters thirty-eight and thirty-nine are this tremendous panorama, just this incredible view of all the wonders of God's world. And so, Job's answer is God showing him the wonders of all he's created. My first question is always, "Does that answer Job?" And the answer is, yeah, it does. It does. Move ahead to chapter forty, verse one of the Bible. Chapters thirty-eight and thirty-nine are God talking about all the wonders of his creation. Chapter forty begins. God concludes his speech and says, "And the Lord said to Job, 'Shall you a fault-finder contend with the Almighty? Anyone who argues with God must respond.' Okay, Job, let's hear your answer." "And then Job answered the Lord, 'See, I am a small account. What shall I answer you? I lay my hand in my mouth. I have spoken once, and I will not answer twice, but proceed no further.'" In other words, "Okay, God, I'll be quiet." God's answer satisfies Job. For the first time in the book, Job is actually shut up. For the first time, he is silenced. He's been answered. He's overwhelmed by God. Like, "Question, what just happened? What happened?" And I think the answer is, Job gets his perspective. All of a sudden, he realizes that he is not the only pebble on the beach. God is God. And Job has been very presumptuous and challenging God. Job is now awed, and correctly so, as he sees God's presence and God's wisdom. Notice the change in Job. If you go back to chapter thirty-one, this is probably the height of Job's arrogance. And Job says, "Oh, that I had liked the ear of thee. Here is my signature. Let the Almighty answer me. Oh, that I had the indictment written up by my adversary. I'd carry it on my shoulder. I'd bind it on me like a crown. I'd give an account of all my steps. Like a prince, I would approach God." I mean, it's pretty arrogant stuff. "Okay, God, tell me what the indictments are, and I'll be right in your face." Now, in chapter forty, Job shifts a few gears. "See, I am a small account. What shall I answer you? I lay my hand in my mouth. I have spoken once. I will not answer twice, but I will proceed no further." So, what is happening is God shows Job the wonders of his creation, and Job is quiet. Question. Question. Hasn't God said much the same thing that the friends said? I mean, haven't the friends said pretty much the same thing? "God is wonderful. God is majestic. God is all-powerful. Job, be quiet." Friends have said about the same thing, haven't they? And Job just sloughs it off. Keeps telling the friends they don't know what they're talking about. Why does God's speech make a difference? I mean, this is not new material. Eliphus has been sharing this stuff for the last couple of chapters. Now, God says the same thing, and Job is awestruck. What happened? I suspect it's not so much what was said as who said it. Not so much what was said as who said it. Job, all of a sudden, is no longer facing words about God. He's facing God. And he realizes in that moment that he has nothing to say. All of a sudden, he faces the reality of God, not words about God, and that's overwhelming. John Stenzbog, who I've quoted many, many times, has a quote in Aldous that I love, and that is, "Revelation is personal, not propositional." Revelation, our meaning of God, is always personal. It's not propositional. I like that. Now, what I think Stenzbog means is that faith is not just an academic ascent to certain doctrines. It is not just saying, "Yeah, I agree with certain propositions about God." It is rather encountering the living God. Faith is not just an exercise in philosophy and reason. It's personal. It's being touched by the hand of God. It's realizing that God is God, and God finally is the one who controls the world. And so, what's happened is Job has heard all these words before. It doesn't matter. But now, he recognizes that God is the one speaking the words, and he is overwhelmed. God answers Job with God's presence. And that's the answer Job needs. That's the answer he needs. Let's see. The Bible goes on to say that God's speech brings Job a conviction of sin. And I think that's right. Job realizes that what he has said has been sinful. I suspect it also brought Job a realization of joy, that, yeah, God in the universe does still care and does still speak. And so, I think he probably feels guilty and joyful all at the same time. Well, that's chapter thirty-eight and thirty-nine. God speaks. Job repents. Should be the end of the book, right? Maybe you should about do it. The chapter that I'm in, it should take care of it. Doesn't end there. Chapters forty and forty-one, God does the same thing. Chapter forty and forty-one, Job's gonna get about the same speech all over again. God is gonna continue to reiterate that he is the God of all creation, gonna say very, very much the same thing. And I have to confess that when I... Usually, when I read Job, I kind of get the feeling of overkill. It's like, you know, "Dear Lord, he's down. Stop kicking him." You know, "You've made your point. He's on his knees. You don't have to pull..." You know, it just kind of, okay, you know, you got it. That's enough. Yeah. But I think what the author is trying to do is stretch the balance. Remember, this is Hebrew poetry. And one of the things that's very important in Hebrew poetry is balance and repetition. And so, if you go back to the beginning of the book, God has twice expressed confidence in Job. Satan comes to God twice and says, "Job doesn't love you." God twice says, "Yeah, he does." Now, at the end of the book, God twice chastises Job. And so, I think the reason for the second speech is to just add some balance. To my modern sensibilities, you really don't need it. For Hebrew poetry, it has an effect of balance in the book. And so, I think it's a poetic means of emphasizing everything. Well, chapter forty, God is gonna do it again. Let me continue on with chapter forty. I did those opening verses. Chapter forty, "The Lord says to Job, 'Should a fault-finder contend with the Almighty? Anyone who argues with God must respond.' And Job says, 'I am a small account. I lay my hand in my mouth. I have spoken once. I will not answer twice, no further.'" And then, verse six, here we go again. "Then the Lord answered Job out of the world: 'Gird up your loins like a man.'" He said that already. "I will question you, and you will declare to me. Will you leave and put me in the wrong? Will you condemn me, that you may be justified? Have you an arm like God? Can you thunder with a voice like his? Deck yourself with majesty and dignity. Clothe yourself with glory and splendor. Pour out the overflowings of your anger. Look at all who are proud in the basement. Look at all who are proud, and bring them low. Tread down the wicked where they stand. Hide them all in the dust together. Bind their faces in the world below. Then I will acknowledge you, and I will give your own right hand and give you victory." God basically says the same thing. "Job, if you're so self-sufficient, if you have the ability to question me and challenge me, then why don't you just take over running the universe for a couple of days? You know, just take over and see how it goes." And the implication is clear. No one, not even a good man like Job, has any basis for challenging God. When it comes to standing before God, none of us have a way to stand. Well, there's an interesting section. The next verses in chapter forty are kind of... Oh, again, it's already very annoying. The next verses in chapter forty are kind of fun. Two creatures get introduced. First, in forty fifteen, there is Behemath. "Look at Behemath, which I made just as I made you. It eats grass like an ox. Its strength is in its loins. Its power is in its muscles and its belly. It makes a tail stiff like a cedar. Its sinews of its thighs are knit together. Its limbs are like bars of iron. It was the first of the great acts of God. Only its maker can approach it." Sounds a little bit, sounds a little bit like a hippopotamus. Verse forty, or chapter forty-one, he then introduces Leviathan. "Can you draw out Leviathan with a fishhook or press down its tongue with a cord? Can you put a rope in its nose or pierce its jaw with a hook?" In other words, God says, "Can you take care of Behemath and Leviathan?" And the first question we have to ask is, "Who are Behemath and Leviathan?" And Job's scholars have argued over that for centuries. Some scholars think it actually is a hippopotamus and a crocodile. And so, what God is saying is, "Okay, Job, you're so great. Here's two animals I created, hippopotamus and a crocodile. Take over. You know, tell me how you created them. You come to turn zone. Tell me if you can control the hippopotamus." You know, it's just God again putting him in his place. Other scholars think that Behemath and Leviathan are actually more than that. They're kind of mythological chaos monsters. They're symbols of the chaos in creation. And if you read through Psalms, there actually are some mentions of these creatures. And what they are is biblically, they're kind of kind of undersea monsters that are just symbols of the forces of chaos in the world. Whatever they actually are, what God is saying is, "I'm the one who controls all this stuff. I control the animals. I control the chaos. Job, if you want to try to control these things, go right ahead." But God's statement is, "I'm the one who finally give order here." Notice, Job has been saying all along, "God is unjust." You know, "God just is not just." Now, God responds by saying, "Wait a minute, Job. I'm the only one that's keeping order in the universe." You know, take it back a year. "I'm the only one, finally, that is keeping order here." And again, the gist of the second speech is the same as the first. God alone is in control of the universe, and God doesn't need to answer anyway. And again, Job submits. Job again submits. Start of chapter forty-two. "Job answered the Lord, 'I know that you can do all things, and that no purpose of yours can be afforded. Who is this that hides counsel above knowledge?' That's a quote to Job earlier. Therefore I have learned, but I did not understand things too wonderful for me, which I did not know. Here and now I will speak. I will question you. Will you declare to me? I have heard of you by the hearing of the year, but now my eyes see to you. Therefore I despise myself and repent in dust and ashes.'" And so, now, Job is truly contrived. He repents. No, he is not repenting of any gross sins that he had done before his calamity. He was a righteous man. But he is repenting of what is said in the midst of his calamity. "God is unjust. God is not to be trusted. God is all to give me." All of those indictments, Job now realizes, are wrong. And he realizes that being faithful now was trusting God in the midst of everything, even with appearances to look after him. Three observations. Three observations about this chapter. First one, and I love this. The answer for Job, the answer for Job is not an intellectual answer, but a religious one. Job never learns why he suffered. He never gets to read the prologue. Job never learns why he suffered, and it is God, not a logical explanation, that brings peace to his heart. Job's answer was not sight and understanding, but faith. It's not an intellectual answer that satisfies Job. It is the very presence of God that satisfies Job. And I suspect, we've probably got some people here that can relate to that. I see that in pastoral work all the time. You know, tragedy strikes, and the first question we ask is, "Why?" You know, "God, where are you? What are you doing?" And we usually don't get that "why" question answered. But what happens is people move beyond the question and find a peace of God that is beyond all logical explanation. In fact, we've got a gorgeous phrase for that in our liturgy. In our liturgy, we talk about the peace of God that passes all understanding. I love that. "The peace of God that passes all understanding. I finally don't understand what's going on here, but somehow, God's got me in the midst of it. And I can't give you all the answers, and I don't need to, because I know whose ends I'm residing in." I love that. Job's answer is finally not to his head, but to his heart. Let me stop there. Does that make sense? Is that something that makes sense to you out of your experience? The more I read that, I try to understand God with my head, and I never get there. I get some headaches trying to do that. But what actually, what satisfies me, what keeps me going, is the heart knowledge, that in faith, I realize I'm in a relationship with a God who cares for me. And that, that cares me. So, first observation. Job's answer is not an intellectual one, but a religious one. Second one. Job's light and release comes not through a human being and not through a human's speech, but it seems to come through nature. God shows Job all the glories of creation, and that's where Job encounters God. Some scholars have suggested that maybe what the author is doing is verbalizing his own spiritual experience, that God spoke to Job not so much by words, but just by seeing the glories of creation. And I can relate to that. You know, I've seen some gorgeous sunsets and sunrises and been in the mountains and seen, you know, it just kind of explodes and says, "Yeah, God is here." You know, it might have been some experience like that. Don't know, but somehow, we just connect into it all. And whether it's by direct speech, whether it's by a spiritual experience, Job again recognizes the origin of God. And the third observation, this one, I love too. Job is still sick. He's still in the garbage, you. But he no longer complains. And why not? Because he knows that he has God with God. He's rich. Questions and answers. So far, so good. I always worry when there's no questions. It either means I've been perfectly clear, or I've got everybody so befuddled, they don't even know where to start. Yeah, I'm not gonna ask which it is, but let's finish the book and look at the epilogue. There's the conclusion to the book. And this actually has got some very significant stuff. Forty-two, chapter forty-two, verse ten. And notice, it shifts back to prose now. The prologue, the introduction, was prose. And now, we've had, what, like thirty, almost forty chapters of poetry. Now, the very end, the last page, goes back to prose. Verse seven. "After the Lord had spoken these words to Job, the Lord said to Eliphus the Termonite, 'My wrath is kindled against you and against your two friends; for you have not spoken to me what is right, as my servant Job has. Now, therefore, take seven bulls and seven rams, and go to my servant Job and offer up for yourselves a burnt offering, and my servant Job shall pray for you; and I will accept his prayer, not to deal with you according to your following; for you have not spoken to me what is right, as my servant Job has done.'" "So Eliphus the Termonite, and Doan the Shuite, and Zophar the Namethite went, and did what the Lord told them; and the Lord accepted Job's prayers." Isn't that marvelous? I mean, it just kind of... Job has accepted his medicine. He is repentant of the sin that he has committed. Now, God comes to Job's side and backs up Job's basic claim against his friends. Job says, or God says to the friends, "Job has spoken rightly of me all along. His suffering was not due to any great suffering or any great sin that he committed. The friends, the pious ones, are now condemned, and Job the heretic is commended." I just kind of love that. And then, I love reading the next part. "Job says, 'By the way, friends, I will forgive you, but only if Job asks for it.'" Isn't that just marvelous? I mean, these three friends have spent most of the book banging on their Bible, saying, "This proves to you, Job, that you are a sinner." And now, God enters a conversation and says, "No, you three are the sinners. And I will forgive you, but Job's gotta ask for it." It's just kind of a fun little reversal. And I guess it reminds me, when I am too pious and too busy pointing out somebody else's faults, that maybe I need to be just a little bit careful, because I can end up in the same situation pretty quick. Anyway, Job does. He prays for his friends, and they are forgiven. But church tradition picks that up, and Job becomes known as a great intercessor, that Job becomes kind of one of the saints that can pray for people. Question. Does suffering in the life of a child of God result in a more effective prayer life? Does suffering in the life of a child of God result in a more effective prayer life ministry? And the answer is, yeah. It very often does. Not always, but very often, going through the valley ourselves increases our ability to minister to others and for our own prayer life. That somehow, there in the valley, we discover more of God. And that's exactly what Job went through. So, Job gets his friends forgiven. Then, the very end of the book, and this is... See what you want to do with this ending. Starts with verse ten. "And the Lord restored the fortunes of Job when he prayed for his friends; and the Lord gave Job twice as much as he had before. Then there came to him all his brothers and sisters, and all who had known him before; and they ate bread with him in his house; and they showed him sympathy and comforted him for all the evil that the Lord had brought upon him. And each of them gave him a piece of money and a gold ring. The Lord blessed the latter days of Job more than the beginning; and he had fourteen thousand sheep, six thousand cattle, a thousand yoke of oxen, and a thousand doggies. He also had seven sons and three daughters. He named the first Jemiah, the second Keziah, and the third Gerard..." I'm not even gonna try that. "...in all the land there were no women so beautiful as Job's daughters; and their father gave them an inheritance along with their brothers. After this, Job lived one hundred and forty years and saw his children, and children's children, for generations; and Job died old and full of days." So, Job is now restored prosperity. He is given double what he had before. Does anybody else hear that as kind of a letdown? There was a great Job scholar that calls it kind of the great anticlimax. I mean, and my problem is that it just doesn't seem realistic. You know, I know of a lot of people that have gone through the valley, but that climbing back up to the heights doesn't always happen. It's like the book takes us back to where we began, and it kind of implies that it pays to be good. Is it anybody else? Is that... Anybody else kind of do a double take when they read that? That's... I kind of... I think what the author is trying to do... And remember, the author does not have a doctrine of the resurrection to work with. At this time in Jewish law, they have not... They don't understand that there's gonna be a resurrection. And so, the problem the author has is, he wants to express the truth that God will win out in the end and that God's people will be vindicated in the end. And the only way he has to express that is in materialistic terms. He wants to tell us that, yes, we will suffer. You will win in the end. I suspect in our day, the language we would use is, "Yes, you will suffer, but there will be a resurrection, or you will share the full glory of God." I mean, we use that language. We certainly, we certainly use that language. And I think that's true. And I think that's true. The problem that the author has is, he doesn't have a resurrection to work with. And so he wants to say that, yes, God wins in the end. God's people will always be vindicated. And the way he ends up doing that is with a materialism. Yeah, Job?
This is not important. What do you do with a thousand donkeys?
I was going to say, yeah, you don't need it.
At least it's a cloud you can mow.
Yeah, the numbers, we go through the numbers, and it's like, you know, okay, God, thank you. But yeah, maybe this isn't a blessing. No, it's, yeah, a thousand donkeys, fourteen thousand sheep, six thousand, six thousand cattle.
What do you do with them?
Yep. I mean, the numbers just get a little crazy. And I think the point is, again, that God will vindicate people. God will vindicate people. And if Job were written nowadays, I would probably talk in terms of a resurrection. You know, that this is what it is. Okay, so that's a conclusion. You with me on that? Question. Does the ending reinstate the retribution doctrine? Does the ending reinstate the retribution doctrine? Remember, the issue in the book is the retribution doctrine. The good, good, good will get good, bad will get bad. Job has just spent forty chapters refuting that, saying that is not always the case. Are we back to that? Are we back to that?
Only if you live long enough.
Only if you live long enough, it'll work, okay? If you live long enough. Let me suggest we're not back to the retribution doctrine, because there is something really radically different going on here. And that is, the retribution doctrine is works theology. We get what we deserve. It's works theology. You will get that which you earn. You've been good, you get good. You've been bad, you get bad. We get what we earn, what we've earned. We earn our own blessings. Notice, at the end of Job, Job's blessings are a gift of sheer grace. Job hasn't earned anything. In fact, he is a sinner. He is unworthy. Job says, "I despise myself." Job recognizes that he has nothing to offer God, and yet it is on the sinner that God now bestows his gifts. The unworthy one is now blessed by God solely as an act of God's grace of love. It's kind of a surprise ending. Namely, that now the sinful one, the one who acknowledges his own sin, is now blessed and prospers as a free gift of God. That, my friends, is what we as Lutherans call grace. Saint Paul hasn't written his books yet about how grace is central, but Job's got it. That one of the incredible notices of the Bible is that God blesses sinners like Job and you and me. It's not what we deserve. It's not retribution doctrine. It's a gift of grace, a benefit.
If he had not prayed for his friends, would God have blessed him?
Question. If Job had not prayed for his friends, would God have blessed him? I don't know. I don't know. It is interesting the way that's worded. I mean, it seems like the prayers, the prayers for the friends are essential. I don't know. "And the Lord restored the fortunes of Job when he prayed for his friends." I don't know. I think if Job, I would think it's safe to say that if Job had not been able to forgive his friends, he never would have found the healing he needed. You know, one of the neat things about forgiveness is it always heals us as much as it does the other person. And so if Job can't move into forgiveness, then I guess in a sense, he's never going to find forgiveness or fullness of life. When you can't forgive, that finally eats away at you at least as much as the other person. Interesting. Yeah, is that, is that part of what Job needs to do his own time to?
Other responses to that?
I just find it's an interesting twist that, you know, they're arguing all along, the good get blessed, and now at the end, it's the sinners that get blessed. But boy, Paul St. Paul's going to pick up on that in the New Testament and turn that into what we Lutherans call justification by grace through faith. Beautiful, beautiful theme in the Bible. So the epilogue, a couple of points, a couple of points. I think it says, number one, God is good in spite of all appearances to the contrary. That there will be times in your life when you really doubt the goodness of God. And what the epilogue says is, God is good in spite of all appearances. And second, I think it says that we now live by faith. Someday that faith will be turned into sight. We now live by faith. Someday that faith will be turned into sight. Most likely for us, it'll be in a resurrection, not quite as Job experienced it, but the day will come when we experience, when we experience our faith as sight. One last quote. This is always John Stenshaw's summary of the book of Job. I think it's probably in the Bible space I'd hand it out. But Stenshaw included most of his studies by saying, "Job suffered much, not for any fault of his own, but for purposes hidden from him. As a byproduct of the suffering, Job deepened his knowledge of God, as have millions of readers through Job." And he's saying that God is unjust. What is behind the book is the love of God. And that's all I know about Job. So let me, let me stop and ask for questions.
Nobody would choose that suffering.
I was going to say, I do like what God does with Job. You know, and wouldn't choose that. What, the question that intrigues me is, does God call me to that? You know, does God call me, does God call us to that? That God's involvement in Job's life leads to suffering for the sake of others? What in the world does that look like? And talk about, talk about a corrective to our modern Christianity. You know, modern Christianity, at least in this country, is pretty much feel-good Christianity. You know, I like to be Christian because it makes me feel good, and I'm going to get a better life, and, you know, I'm going to pick what I want, me, 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 me. And Job says, eh, deeper than that. You are called into new life by the living God, and He will take care of you and guide you. But you better know there's some crosses along the way. There's some crosses along the way. And fullness of life would involve suffering. It's a different understanding than we usually have in the, at least in the American churches. I mean, this is, this is what Luther called theology in the cross. That faithfulness will lead to suffering. Now, the good news is that God has, God does his best work through crosses. You know, God, God does his best work when it's Good Friday, and all of a sudden it turns into Easter. So there, you know, there's an answer for that, but...
Of all the things that he lost, he grieved the absence of that closeness to God.
To God, yeah.
And he suffered the losses of so much, but it was the loss of the relationship that he missed. The only thing I know is that if you want to hold something, you have to hold it with an open hand. You know, the things that you try to grasp are the things that are going to be most painful when they're taken from you.
It brings up, the only, you know, finally, the only thing I have to build my life on is my relationship with God. There are so many other things that I value, but I'm not guaranteed them. I mean, that, even that, which is most, my family, you know, my intimate relationships, they're going to change, they're going to, I'm going to, my spouse will pass away, or I will pass away. I mean, all that, all that is transitory. What Job kind of says as a byline is, all that you can depend on is God. And the book says that's enough. And maybe the question the book raises is for us, is, is that enough? Is that enough?
I don't think I've ever heard one before. You really have to go through suffering in order to grow and become closer to God and understand what our relationships are.
Yeah. And that's, yeah. In fact, there's some, there's some New Testament passages where they thank God for the privilege of suffering. That they have matured to a point where God is willing to invest in them and let them suffer. Ooh, they can add for the modern church, yeah. Blaine, Blaine Davis preached a sermon on that. And he talked about that, you know, conflicts and problems in the congregation might actually be a healthy thing. You know, if the church is really healthy, there's never any issues, and da, 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 da. And Blaine was saying, well, maybe that's our time of the woe of us. Maybe congregations have to go through that woe of us time, as God purifies, and eventually you do get to the promised land. But it's in that suffering and struggle that you learn what it is to be faithful. Ooh, does that not work with any of the self-help books you're going to get on congregation of life over Barnes and Nobles? But it might work for scripture.
It's not exactly for us.
For, for, for us, for congregations, individually, corporately. Other thoughts? It is, I mean, that's one of my, and I read Job, and my question is always, is this fair to Job? You know, is this, is this fair to Job? And I think the answer is, God's got a much bigger picture in mind. You know, that I tend to think very individualistically. Is it fair to me? And I think one of the things Job says is, it's a bigger picture. There's a whole, there's a whole community there. There's a whole that maybe what I suffer benefits somebody else. And I would say too, you know, I don't know that the suffering for the sake of others to find fullness of life is such a foreign concept to us. And my, where I say that is, ever been a parent? I mean, parenting involves probably more suffering than any other thing I've undertaken. You know, when they're little, they wait, you go through weeks with no sleep. Then they turn teenagers, and you go through months with no sleep. You know, and it, I mean, it's a giving, it's a suffering, it's an emptying of yourself. And yet, it's the most rewarding thing that I've ever experienced. You know, somehow through that suffer and love, that giving love, I find a whole new life. So I think we've got some analogy, we kind of have parts of life, we know how that works. You know, how do we keep going down that path? Well, yeah.
I will say this, if a parent doesn't hand children a palm.
Yeah, I had that naive, naive idea too. I gave my last one through high school, and we were done. Now you just worry about it long distance.
Yeah, we're all very grateful now.
And it didn't get any easier. But it is, it is somehow suffering, suffering and joy are not, they somehow connect. And we experience that, I think, in our lives, and Job brings that together.
After that last sentence up there, pretty much explains it all, doesn't it? It's the love of God that pulls it all together.
It looks like Satan is pulling all the strings, and in the end, it's God, it's God who's done it. I just ran into that in, oh, we had the meeting in Columbus, and one of the pastors up there said his analogy of God is a master weaver. You know, people are, you know, they weave all these beautiful things. And he said that, you know, we make our mistakes, and we goof things up, and we don't do things right. And God in His grace just manages to work all that into what He finally creates as a masterpiece. That, you know, yeah, we sin, yeah, we blow it, and somehow, and we don't want to minimize that, but somehow God is even able to weave that in. But it's a neat illustration for God. I just kind of like that.
What do you think it would be like if there wasn't Satan? If we didn't have Satan out there doing his dirty works?
That's a drift. Yeah, what would it be like if we didn't have Satan?
Yeah, I mean, for God to give us grace against all that stuff.
My flip answer is, we human beings might take over the job. I guess, I guess that's heaven, huh?
We can fall back on you in nature, which is that's really...
Which is, which is, yeah.
Yeah, the human heart is, that's what it is.
That's, I'm never sure where human evil leaves off and Satan begins. You know, I can never quite, you know, you see some like crazy things that people are capable of. And where is it human evil, where is Satan? You know, World War II, you know, the Holocaust and all that, you know? Where was that human evil? And where do you see it satanic? I'm not sure, but it's sure a mess. Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately, it's very commonplace. It's a commonplace. The, where did I see it? Sunday morning show, they were saying how many ordinary people enjoy the actual participate. That it was not isolated to famous camps, that there were thousands of camps, neighborhood camps. That it was, it was so common that there was no excuse, there was no bad ends.
Oh, I ever heard Baikah, a closest friend of Dietrich Bahnauer, I heard speak years ago. And he said, "Most of us chose to be stupid. We just chose, we didn't want to know."
That's what's going on right here on the world. I mean, it's what it is. Every day, you love the fact. The book is just out there.
Well, let's leave it at that. I think if Job does anything, it keeps you pondering. Thank you for your patience and everything. Let's close with a word of prayer, shall we? Lord, we continue to come with questions and wondering, and we confess that we will do that for as long as we're on this earth. And yet we thank you that you continue to hold us and guide us and support us. Remind us of that again and again. We need that assurance. And lead us always closer to you. Remind us that you are the one who gives life, and you give that abundantly. For in your name we pray. Amen.